Read through all of it.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting for July twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. It being six o'clock, I now declare this meeting open. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants of WR twenty five oh two.
I move that we approve the warrant. WR twenty five dash zero two. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public session. Anybody here for a public session?
Bring that up on the new business still, you guys know, bring us up to date on Crocker and Arrow.
Yeah, would be good.
You're you'll be the next one coming. No public session tonight?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure whether I'm on for Council on Aging or not.
For?
The uh, public wifi?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Town Hall wifi accessibility.
Oh, okay. Didn't see COA.
No, just in general.
Okay. We had put out for seasonable seasonal bid recommendations from the Highway Superintendent. And we have our results of the awards for each area that has been requested. Um, Harold, would you please let us know who the
You want me to read?
Awards were? Yes, please.
The asphalt emulsion was approximately sixty thousand gallons, was five twenty five awarded to All States Asphalt. Stone seal, approximately eleven thousand square yards, three sixty five a square yard, with also All States Asphalt. Double stone seal, ten thou- approximately ten thousand square yards, seven twenty a square yard, All States Asphalt again. Bytuminous concrete in place roughly eight thousand ton, eighty seven point seven one a ton to mass broken stone. Bytuminous concrete picked up approximately five hundred ton is eighty dollars a ton, mass broken stone. There is no bids on pipe. Escavator rental, it's two hundred dollars an hour, it's RJ McDonald for fifteen thousand pound excavator. Reclamation approximately thirty five hundred square yards was three dollars and twenty cents a square yard to Murray paving and reclamation. Cold patch, approximately sixty tons to Parma paving at a Parma mass for hundred and thirty five dollars a ton picked up. But picked up. Washed sand. It was RJ McDonald approximately four thousand ton, nineteen dollars a ton. Screen sand nineteen dollars to RJ McDonald, approximately twenty six hundred ton. I'm gonna go through all the stones, the different sized stones too. Those are the main ones that we do.
All of these were rewarded to RJ McDonald?
Yep, those are all I didn't done.
That's fine.
Yeah, all the stone looks like it's all one company, right? Which is RJ McDonald.
Then the tailings was RJ McDonald, six inch minus was thirty two dollars a ton delivered, I mean, Jim Donald. Concrete burn, fif- approximately fifty ton, hundred and five dollars a ton to Parma paving.
Whoa.
The number seventeen.
Oh, that was bytuminous concrete.
Concrete burn.
Alright.
I felt burned.
Nope.
Hand bytuminous concrete done but in place, put in place by hand approximately fifty ton. That's three hundred and fifty dollars a ton to PJ Keating. Item number twenty three to twenty to twenty three was no bids. There was a pipe, I got it spread out further on the last page. Then the number two fuel oil approximately twenty thousand gallons was three dollars a gallon to RJ McDonald. Then da- diesel fuel was three dollars and sixty six cents gallon to RJ McDonald. Then on the last page, I broke down, there was no bits for the pipe, but I broke it down just so everybody would see.
Okay.
So, there's no questions, I'll make a motion to accept the bids as stated by the Highway Superintendent um, for the FY twenty five material bids for the department.
Harold, on the pipe.
Yep.
What, there's no bid, would you?
When I do a job, like today, when I'm calling around for Crocker and I, I have to call, I've got two places to call so far. I'm doing phone call quotes because under the, I believe it's ten thousand dollar, I can do phone call still, so it's done by each individual job. Okay. Cause they, Kevin always said that he's always had trouble getting bids on seasonal bids with pipe because the pipe prices fluctuate so much. So he's always called around getting prices.
Okay.
I gotta find one more to call, so I get them three, but I got two. And the pipe plus in Lamis, that was three hundred dollars cheaper than so far.
Okay.
Hmm.
Good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We wanna talk about that issue a little bit, just so you guys are aware, on Hunt Road.
Yes.
On Crocker and I.
Yeah, doing both, Harold.
On Hunt Road, we are doing a logging operation and they unloaded the timber harvest machine right onto the road with big steel cleats and they didn't put any planking down. And we left good marks right in the road. I have pictures of it. I spoke with Fred. He's also done a police report and I spoke, went down, spoke with the operations guy down there. And they're gonna do anything we need to to make it right. It's their first job in town. They made a mistake, so they wanna make it better. Seems like they can work with me good. I've talked, Holden trap rock came out today and he gave me two recommendations to have come, he calls it infrared. They take and warm it back up and they add a little bit of oil and they rake, re-rake it around and re-roll it. So I got two companies and we'll have the company pay to do that, to fix the road.
Is the logging company complete?
They just started.
They just started, so they still have a lot more to go.
He's thinking they'll be there till fall.
So how are they going to make it so that they don't make the road worse?
They're gonna make sure they put thick wooden planks down on the road if they have to drive on the road, driving wood. And that prevents them from touching the road with metal cleats of that machine.
And they didn't think to do that the first time around?
There's been issues, other issues before with other people, I know Kevin's chased them down before. And I'm old and excavators, the excavator tracks aren't as aggressive, but they still scratched the road. That road was just paved last year.
I know it was.
Yep.
But Fred was very cooperative with me and the guys were very cooperative. I asked him to put good backing behind the road there for their interest in, so he did that in contact with today. He's been very good so far talking back and forth. He said he wants to have a good reputation when he leaves. He said they made it.
Sure he does. Okay.
Good, sounds good.
Very good. And your other issue?
Other issues on Crocker and I road above the spring, the road has been settling away. I've noticed for a while. We're gonna, I'm gonna run some drainage up the up the left hand side. I met Mike the other day. Four uh, Mass Highway Engineers came out and were very helpful. They said if we would have it all engineered and to go down in that swamp, it'd be a lot of work with engineering and conservation committee. Could go excess of a million dollars, that little section. But they recommended just running drainage up the other side to try to get some of the water out of there, so it's not trying to run under the road. So I'm gonna start, I'll take that out of my budget. It's roughly eighteen hundred dollars, almost just under nineteen hundred dollars. I have not, most of the materials up there. I have to get pipe, which will be fourteen hundred dollars. We have enough stone. I have some millions to build that low spot back up. And I'll hope, once I can, once we finish, I'll pave over that to make it level again. I'll put a patch over it. We'll spread the asphalt ourselves. And the asphalt will be roughly five hundred dollars.
When do you anticipate this work to begin?
I called for my dig save ticket today. I can't dig until like, I know there's nothing there to make sure I have everything right. I can't set digging until Thursday, Thursday, eight forty five, I believe, or so I'll wait till Monday morning, I'll get all the pipe and everything ready to go. And start digging Monday morning, like, three days, we should be able to get that then.
And you're applying to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, I spoke with.
For?
The
An emergency certificate? Why do you need an emergency certificate?
Cause the wetland over banking.
It's under a hundred feet away from uh, wetland?
Yes.
That's the stream?
Yep.
Okay. So you're gonna need your emergency certificate then within the next week and a half?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll cut, touch base the new ones, I make sure that the pipe, make sure, they said they have it, so. I'll pick up the pipe tomorrow, so I may try to get it. Maybe else grabs it and I'll get space with you to get them, that wetland paper going.
Okay, good, good. Sounds like you have everything in place and ready to go. That is a huge project, so keep our eye close to it, but you seem like you have everything ready to go.
Mass DOT was very help, I've talked to space with them a couple times, they've been very helpful with everything.
Good, good. I'm glad to hear it.
I had two questions. I've called Kevin and he's been very helpful too.
Good, thank you.
Good. Thanks, Harold.
Okay, Town Hall wifi accessibility. There has been a request by a resident of town to be able to use the Town Hall wifi at his home, from what I understand.
Not, not at his home. Excuse me, Barbara Ruschinsky, Council on Aging. It's a
The question was made of you.
Yes, they, yes, I, uh, it came in on the Council on Aging email or a phone. And it's someone in town who's moving and their wifi has been discontinued because of the move. And they, he's a physician and he would like to be able to communicate with his patients. He tried going to the library parking lot to be able to work from his computer with the wifi at the library and he said it wasn't very successful and he wondered about coming here. He needs the privacy to talk with his patients. Since then, I think I have a solution for it because we had Lauren from the library come and they loan out hotspots. So I called him back and told him about the hotspot, but, and I haven't heard back from him, so that probably solved the problem. Um, going forward however, we realized that downstairs, our computer, one of the computers that we were given is for public usage so that someone can come in and pay bills or see pictures or whatever it is they need to. That would not require a password or whatever because once it's there, we don't, we don't need to access it again. But going forward, I want, I don't know, this is the first time we've had this as a question. Going forward, I don't know what the policy would be. It would be someone on their personal computer using passwords from the Town Hall and I don't know what your feeling is about that.
The Technology Department was contacted on this question and his answer was no. That it should not, and it should not even be given to people working in
On their cell phones. That shouldn't even be given for access on cell phones. Um, ideally because of being compromised for breach, easier to hack in if there was a security issue and the insurance got wind that we give people the passwords to log into our secure network. It could, you know, result in a claim not being addressed.
So I think technology is gonna try to find an alternative. Because we have people that come to our meetings that bring their computers with them and they're either lawyers or accountants to work with whoever our guest is for the evening and they have to get into the wifi to work from their computer, so.
Most of us, before we had a computer at all, were using our own computers and phones in order to do anything.
Right.
So we had access to that password.
Now, there is the option of creating a guest Town Hall
Yeah.
webs or access, which is unsecured, but that comes with a monetary cost for the town to
Right.
provide that. I think Paul had said it was four hundred dollars estimate one time fee. But when it was initially established, that wasn't in the funding for the IT back then, so I don't know if it's something that the board would wanna revisit, but in the meantime, the Town Hall password should not be given lightly.
Yeah.
We're just gonna need to look into everything that we can look into to make sure that we're safe. That cybersecurity is out there and we're being warned about it by KP and by MI, Maya as well. So we're gonna have to be really very careful and come up with some kind of a policy with technology to fix this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't afford to have insurance carrier not cover us.
No, yeah, no. Especially since we all took that class.
Yeah.
It would not look good.
We, we should have known.
Anything else? Any other comments about it?
I have another question. It's just come to our attention. We were told, we, we know about um, Office three sixty five. And originally I was told that it was not something that the Council on Aging would actually use. What we're finding is that printing our own herald in-house and emailing it in-house from our computer. There is something that comes up and it took us a long time to circumvent the fact that we don't have Office three sixty five in order to email out the herald to the people who are on our list.
You need Office three sixty five in order to email it out?
I believe so, because there was a, there's a uh, a message that comes up that says we um, sign on to Office three sixty five and, and again, I haven't looked at it in a while, so I may be saying something wrong, but as a result, we cannot forward. There were a number of, of things that we cannot
I think if you, who, if there, it's, it's being created on the Office three sixty five outside, then you can't, you can view it, but you can't edit it or you can't.
If you created a document and it won't create it, is that what, and gives you the the pop-up thing?
It gives us the pop-up the minute we sign in.
Oh, okay.
And we have a list.
And that's for username and password?
Uh, I'm not sure what that will, again, it, it's been a while since I looked at it. If, I know that Melanie left us instructions as to have emailed from the computer that's downstairs. I think between the time those instructions were made and when we tried to mail out the last email out the last herald, it took us a couple hours to try to circumvent whatever that prompt is about Office three sixty five.
Worth exploring, seeing someone who may be tech savvy. I know that you have a new member to the Council on Aging who is very tech savvy.
Right.
Um, or I could take a look at it myself, just to see if it's something that aligns.
We were able to do it, but it took
Okay.
a lot of finagling and a lot of two heads trying to do the right thing.
Some of these Microsoft programs, they want your email and password to your email and it'll work. Might wanna try that.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And then there's a, if, I mean, that's something we'd like to check into, whether we actually need Office three sixty five. One of the things that was mentioned is printing labels so that we don't have to handwrite um, the addresses for these hand mailed uh, heralds and that could be easily accomplished on three sixty five. Right now, it's done on someone's personal computer. So that's, I, and going forward, again, I'm not as tech savvy as I perhaps should be, but there are what I've been told by people who are, is that there are more possibilities for our usage of it than not. Originally, we were told, oh, you don't do enough, you don't need it. But I don't know what that is. Is that a licensing?
It is a licensing with a fee, so I think that the board was initially, and this is when the former selectman was on the board as well, who who was very involved and did a great job, um, kinda narrowing it and figuring out who would have the most benefit of it and would use it frequently to make it worth, you know, the additional yearly expense.
Right, and I don't think it was his um, recommendation that we not have it. I think it came from people who were working for the Council on Aging um, that said, oh, we don't need that.
Well, I'm not saying it was his recommendation or not.
No, 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 I, I, what I'm saying is I don't think there was another voice saying that we didn't need it.
Yeah.
It was someone who was accustomed to using their own computer and all of those things to get things done, so uh, going
Yeah, I don't recall any uh.
Do you have a list of the licenses who has?
Yeah.
Are they on that?
No. No, it's Board of Health. The um, the selectmen and I believe um, the Board of Health members. Um, selectmen, maybe police. It's not a whole lot.
Police, fire and highway will need it. He's got documents he's gonna work on. Thought we did all the big deposits. And didn't we include the library?
Well, for, no, they're on their own. We looked into it, but we've never fully merged with IT having the library all under them.
Oh, they think.
Yeah. So definitely can look into it and see, I'll get a, a list and see who's on there and then you guys can
See who's on.
And maybe Mary Bell, you can look at that message that comes up.
Yeah.
That's giving us an issue.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
And I have one more thing that just popped up, um, and it involves email kind of. I checked in, the last time we were granted um, money from the, the Alden Trust for gift cards. I had a terrible time trying to get bulk cards from Hanaford. There, your name, Lucy's name is on it. There's a password that's required. If I could just use that, I could get into it. I can't. They put my email, my personal email on it and because we do not have a password, I can't get into it. So I've investigated what do we do from here. And Holly at Hanaford is willing to work with me. But the, because of the way Hanaford's bulk mail, bulk gift card site is set up. Once an account has been created, it can be canceled. But that email address cannot be used again for a new account. So it would mean us as COA perhaps having our own email address in order to accomplish the gift cards.
Not the COA email right now?
No.
But that, so you mean create a whole new email?
Exactly.
Which is an additional expense, cause they're not free anymore.
She suggested doing something with Gmail or something.
Oh, no, we, I don't, that's why we went to this.
Bringing it up because it's from the Alden Trust and whatever.
It has to be a town email.
And not being able to buy them in bulk, I think we lose, if I remember correctly, a twenty percent discount on doing it. And it meant me going to the store. Uh, I forgot how, hundred and fifty cards, three or four times, running each one individually in order to do that. So it would be, it would facilitate things if we can get a password that works.
It can't reset a password?
No. No. So they added my name to the, to the account, but without that password, we can't access it. And that's the only solution that I was given was to create another email address because once it's used, it can't be reused.
No. I think that the only
Can't invoice us? And we pay it through the
We're putting out a hundred and fifty gift certificates.
It's a hundred fifty.
And I don't know about this year. I haven't done the census for this year of seventy five and older. It might be more.
And Barbara, may I ask?
Could very well be.
Who is, so I, it, when I'm emailing, when I email a COA for all this information, is it still, cause I know Melanie's on her leave?
Right.
So is it just you, I don't know?
I'm acting.
You're the acting chair?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
For that.
That's why I chuckled. I wasn't sure who was the acting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bad pennies always show up.
Well, I'm glad to know who it is. I mean, if it's just a Hanaford's account and it's only linked to the person that's there for that one and solo purpose, would it be? I don't know if you can do your own personal email. Right, I'm just thinking of where do you create, create a whole new email that you have to pay for?
Nothing associated with Town.
I know, just trying to explore without having to create a
Again, we're back to the insurance company.
For sure.
In fact, it's, it's a, it's not Hanaford per se, it's a, you know, a third party that they pay um, to do that. There's no option to reset the password?
No.
That's so odd, right?
I tried that. Lucy, you remember the password?
It's been three years since I even used Hanaford for anything.
Password.
I, I, I'm working with Holly, so I will check that out.
Yeah, I'm su- did I give you something when you called me? Did I give you anything to try? Cause I couldn't think what I would have used. The only password I use on things is Archie.
Don't say it aloud.
Didn't have a letter or a number or anything else other than the name associated with it? I mean, I can, I'm, again, I'm working with Holly. She's willing to sit down and try to get us into this, but
I just have a hard time that you can't reset it. Most, I know, everything has a forgot password.
I think that's the first thing I try.
I know. So crazy.
I think when I come in, I said, oh, this is easy. I'll just reset the password.
Does it even give that option?
I don't think so.
What do other businesses do?
You have an option to reset the password.
New, new owner takes over.
Yeah.
Has an account there and he's gonna
And that's what, exactly what's happening and
The only thing, well, I know my name was on it, but I can't think because the last one to get anything from Hanaford in bulk was Ashley. And it took her quite a bit to get it, cause then I came in one day and she says, oh, I finally got through and was able to get it. And then they sent everything by email. Every card came on my email.
Oh, like an e-card?
An e-card. And I had to write back to them saying, I'm sorry, we can't use these. And they eventually had to give us the hard cards. But they are not making it easy for us to use and get bulk. It used to be, it used to be very simple.
A bad name. It's not Hanaford.
No, no.
It's the problem. It's this third party.
Yeah.
Cause the girls at Hanaford have been absolutely wonderful.
Well, let's see if what she says, hopefully there's a way to reset the password and, or any other solution and, I'm gonna go from there.
That was the only one she's offered so far is if it could be approved, that there be a separate address. But, and it, she was doubtful about that too, since it's a gift from the town. Basically, she knew that probably wouldn't work.
Right, I think that with this one, especially now that these have to be paid for, it, you know, it's, it's not like our old system.
Yeah.
That we can just create even like a distribution email, but it was at no cost. This, as soon as you create the email, it's, you know, you have to pay the license fee for the full year.
Yeah.
So seeing as the Council of Aging falls under the Board of Selectmen, could the Board of Selectmen's email be used? Trying to help you, Barbara. Thank you. They might not feel that way, but
I've got two thousand emails in there now, just Board of Selectmen's.
Mind a few more?
So I don't, I don't need another three hundred.
Fifty cards? No problem.
Well, again, and the hundred and fifty cards come in bulk and you go once to the store and they're activated once, done, not three or four trips trying to get.
I mean, if the board is out opposed to that, I don't mind, only if the board using my distribution email, but for the admin one, there's an admin at
Beal.
At Ocam and that goes to me for, as the admin versus, so sometimes like if I email, I'm looking for a W nine versus giving my long mess of email, I just give that admin one and it's Admin one and it follows right to me. And then if I reply, they get my full email. You know what I mean? Like a, like a BOS. It's a distribution email.
All right. Easy.
I mean, if there's a solution preferably, but I mean, I'm just saying worst case scenario.
I just tried.
If it's a one-time thing.
Get a jump on it early instead of waiting until the first of December.
Yeah, yeah.
Having to.
Good idea. And it's just a one-time thing, right? It's not like a continuous.
Right. And it would depend on when we are granted, if we are granted or when we are granted the money for those cards from the trust. It can be activate, I mean, they can be, the process can start right away as soon as that's done. So that we aren't under the crunch at the last minute.
I would say just see.
You can do it anytime. I used to do it in October.
I think I started last year in October.
Use the admin.
Sure.
Email.
I don't see why not. If we use.
Yeah, if it's just for that one sole purpose.
Right.
Sure.
That's, that's what Holly suggested. If it's for that one sole purpose, what would be the harm of having a separate email address for the Council on Aging? But if.
But it's because.
Place.
It, yeah, like I said, it's the financial cost attached to.
Right.
Yeah, right. An email for just one.
Right.
Okay. I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
Hopefully that works. At the next meeting, we could get the. Process started early if we wanted to take a vote at the next meeting as to whether we're going to do the cards. For this Christmas.
Should we get the. Census so that you know what you're talking about as far as the numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chris should probably be able to find that. And then you can tell us, you know, when you would like it and how many you need and. We can vote on the cost.
So do I need, seeing that it's an email linked to me, do I need to set this password or?
Perhaps.
Yeah, I can call Holly. I know who Holly is.
Okay.
At Hannaford.
That's, actually, it may be clearer coming from you than from someone who not.
I'll give her a call. Sure.
Okay. Any other comment suggestions? No? Okay. We'll move on. To the town hall voting room roof. We still have our hole in the ceiling, which should be patched and something should be pushed up in there that'll fit. But that doesn't take away the problem with, the roof must have a leak in it somewhere because it keeps coming in. We're going to have to find a solution to see if we can't fix that, at least before we still get the fall rain coming in.
Mary Bell called and said it was leaking. Kevin sent it down. I pulled that tile down so it wouldn't keep running out. And it was almost straight up. It was coming through the roof. So there's a shingle or something.
Shingle.
I tried, we tried to put a top over it, but.
It was a windy day. It looked like they were flying a huge kite out there.
Well, the top right, probably I don't know if you tried to, we couldn't put screws or anything. Then we put more holes in it, but tried to, you know, town with the, when just one.
Yeah, there's definitely an issue. But it, it's when you get excessive, still it has to be repaired.
Yeah.
You know, like a little rain, it doesn't usually leak. It's a excessive amount.
It's when we have the heavy rains.
Still, yeah.
Cause it, it didn't leak the other night in that torrential downpour. When Finance Committee was here, there was no leak at all.
It leaked because we had like two. Or three days of like consistent rain. It was one of that, that period when we had, yeah, a few days.
Must have been blowing up under the shingles. Mary Bell mentioned finding, I've been looking around to find a one by one tile. Let's put that, cause that one got lost and it must've been somebody cleaned. It must've got thrown away. Cause it was pretty soggy and messed up.
It was.
On a couple of home people, the right size. See if we can find a couple of just one, one of our vendors, but I'll try to find a tile.
Okay.
Been in that.
But do you think the roof needs repair?
Something's gotta be done deadly.
And what's the material on the roof?
Those are asphalt.
Asphalt.
Leave their asphalt shingles.
Yeah, they're GAF shingles.
Are those still allowed?
Yeah, yeah, they're asphalt.
Okay.
Somebody might be able to just go up there and put a piece of that, some asphalt, good, that's good with low, you know, grease and stuff.
If you can find a leak, walk with a.
Yeah, cause.
Bucket of tar.
It's not linking any place else that we've seen. In this room.
The way it rained the other night.
Should come to again.
Yeah.
Plus like a long enough, maybe one of the windstones, I looked at it, then with the heat, it might have sealed, it should go back down too.
That gives us two options, just try to fix that one spot or re-roof. The entire structure. Okay.
Might be able to get a roofing company, you can just do a catch.
And the big thing is find it. You know, I know it looks like it.
It looked like it was.
But it could be.
Running down the boards.
Between two shingles and then migrating down.
Yeah. Is there a good roofing company around that's inexpensive?
I think something like that. We're probably more of a handyman type thing.
Really, it is.
Yeah.
I'll get you a, I'll get you a ladder.
Thanks, Lucy.
Anything to help. Sorry.
Probably only got a south wind.
Yeah.
And it blows the paint up under the shingles.
How old, how old those shingles are?
1996. Over.
That's when they did.
It's when they did the roof, yeah. Pretty September, October.
Six.
Was fall.
Well, sixteen years.
And those were 50-year shingles.
They were 50-year singles?
50-year shingles, yeah.
They didn't last 50 years.
Wow.
That one didn't.
One of them didn't anyway.
Just right there and didn't.
Yeah.
But. Those were the thickest shingles you could buy at the time. So.
Okay, well, they can look into some roofing companies and see if we can't get somebody up here. Cause we're gonna need somebody before the season finishes and the new seasons come in. Okay.
Yep.
Will do. Okay, thank you. Capital Strategic Solutions. Which is the company that we've hired for grant writing.
I remember when we hired them, we were kind of questioning.
We did.
Spending the money to get money. So.
We did.
We got the latest report here. They've written five grants to the town.
In what space of time?
A little over a year.
Okay, cause we've had them for two and a half years anyway.
Yeah. The grants that they have written, we have gotten, so they have a hundred percent success rate.
Wonderful.
Which brought into the town $293,000 in grant funding. So for the $4,000 or $5,000, we paid their fee. I think that's a good return on the investment.
In what area of most of the grants?
Municipal fiber optic for 172,000. The law enforcement grant for 49,000, which is the new portable radios. But the police department. The body one cameras. That are now required, $16,000 grant there. The Bridge Academy to get in shape with the new reform law.
Yeah.
$30,000. And the community IT compact grant for 26,000 to upgrade our website. So. They've written all of those. And get a hundred percent return. And none of these grants were cut back. These were the amounts we put in.
Good.
So.
Very good.
Just on a side note, just so people know. In the past three, four years. We have brought this board, the police, the fire, library. Have brought in 1.1 million dollars in grants. Which is not on your tax rate locally. I think all of our employees have done an excellent job going after these grants and we've been pretty successful. Both state and federal.
Been extremely successful. They've worked hard at them. And with our company helping out.
It's.
We've been extremely fortunate.
Even better. One thing I saw that they do now is. You have a project. They do project management. The IT, I mean, website thing, they can trace down everybody and. Do that.
Do we still have more time on that term, that hiring?
Which.
Susan Turnbull, New Branchy Road, is, do we still have a contract with them for going forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not like the end of them and we would need to restart.
No. I think each year we pay into them to continue working with us.
There's no end date to roll over.
Yeah. We've worked with two of their people. I think they've kind of given us one person for this town to use at all times.
They've also.
She's done a really good job.
Buy more employees because they're that busy. So it's growing.
It is.
Yeah.
It used to be an all-female company. I don't know if it still is anymore.
Nope. They've got everybody there now.
Yeah, I know. I, I would keep seeing them adding another one, adding another one. I said, it's still not all female, I don't think. Okay, very good. Thank you so much for that. Okay, next is the Rutland Regional Animal Control Office.
Rutland is adding towns to the. Animal Control. They just added Boilston or West Boilston. Seven.
Seven.
Seven towns.
Seven towns.
I approached them and asked them, seeing that we are smack dab in the middle of their area. If we could join that. They said yes. They're adding a part-time. ACO. Their unit. In order to handle everything. So both my person and part-time person handling all the calls. They forwarded us what their contract looks like.
To handle all the calls, is that?
Animal control.
Animal control dispatch?
Everything physically going out and.
And physically going out. Okay, thank you.
It's not just dogs. It's wildlife, whatever.
Okay.
This contract, it looks, probably looks familiar. It's pretty much the same as dispatch. The Richard Wade and ambulance.
I just want you to know that I received page one. Page three and page five.
It looks like it was double sided and that's how they stand it. If you look at the copy, see how you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how we have it in the.
Couple of pages missing for us to look over. And see how they're doing.
The attachment that was forwarded from them is, this is what was printed. Yeah, it looks like, see how it's, if you hold up the paper, you could see. Other lines, like if it was double-sided, but only one side was.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. You got this.
They do have that.
The other thing you should know is that our ACO is one of the top candidates for their part-time.
Who's?
Our ACO.
Has she applied?
Just met with them. So the paper is really the breakdown of what the. They've been in business for 12 years. Not new to this. Right now they have one full-time and one part-time. They have one vehicle dedicated. They have a four animal capacity pound that's located behind their DW on Gossett Road. Dispatched by radio and phone, depending on the location. And the dispatch center, because I say dispatch center because. Richmond is involved in this and they're out of hold and dispatch. Then out of Rutland's. The ACOs have access to Rutland PD's record management system, which is easily shared with the other member communities. We don't have to do anything with that because we're already in it. And they said, although it's not a 24/7 operation, the ACOs make their best effort to respond to emergencies and take calls outside the shift time. I've heard them do that.
Well, in our case, I hope it's two o'clock in the morning.
They have responded to barrier at two o'clock in the morning. So with that many towns though, and that few people, or those few people. It seems like they're. Don't have enough personnel. If, um. All the towns call at the same time. What's the chances of all the towns calling at the same time? Well, the more towns that are in it, that chance goes up. They're bigger towns than us. Yeah. Henceforth, more of a chance for call, more people. And they didn't just really nearly take these towns on. They measured out all the calls. From those other towns and figured out what they needed for staffing. And that's why they're adding one part-time person. So our budget right now is what, 5,500 and change? It's about 7,000.
It's 7,100 for the town, for that department.
Currently.
For OKAM's department.
Yeah.
So they're telling us. That our cost for this year with Rutland would be $7,124.62. I'm just concerned with Rutland. Cause they do not always go with the lower costs. Of raising prices. They're not slow at raising prices of things. And I'm just wondering how fast the costs are going to go up at what percentage? I know what OKAM's percentage is, but I do not know what their percentage is. All of a sudden, they could come up with something else next year to put into the program and say, all of a sudden, now they're going to go up 10%.
They could do that with dispatch. They could do that with the ambulance.
They do that with dispatch all the time.
Uh, we have not gone up. We've gone down. They've added towns.
We were lucky this year. But we have gone up in the past.
In the past we have, but they've added towns which reduces us.
I don't know how much adding towns is going to reduce us from our usual $7,100.
Well, it's a little bit more than that. We have no cattle. We have, if she picks up a dog, she's gonna go to Worcester and we're paying for that. And how is she transporting these?
But that's all included in the 7,100.
How is she transporting these animals? How is she going on calls? She's using her own car and paying her mileage. Nobody should be using their own car for official business. The insurance company's already told us that. You know? How many calls do we have a month right now? Many. ACO.
Barely a few. They've had, they've had some this, um, spring.
A lot of them can be handled by. A lot of them can be handled by phone.
Well, the horses and the sheep can't be.
I would think.
That's a little tough.
I would think the wildlife ones would automatically be fish and game.
No.
Environmental.
No. They will tell you to call your ACO first.
For a bear?
Yep. Been there, done it.
Yeah.
How many people in Ocam call for the bears? Well, they seem to like your house.
I have one taunted me. He's back.
I know, I know. Hmm.
Um, one other thing is we have a new cruiser coming in in sixty-eight weeks.
Yes.
So the twenty sixteen cruiser Fred was getting rid of. Rutland is rolling to take that car.
For how much?
As a backup. Offset the cost. This year.
How much are they gonna give us an offset for?
Well, the chief was talking to Paul about.
The car is worth five hundred dollars. Up to seven thousand at the most.
But if they wanted the second car, it's not costing them five hundred dollars. So. This is.
No, Fred had mentioned maybe keeping that car for the uh, the details. In town. So I'd like to check to see if um. When the officers use their own vehicle. Whether their personal insurance really covers them. If they're in use. Doing a town. Detail. Obviously, our insurance wouldn't cover their car. But would their insurance company say? Hey, you're not covered, you're. You're on duty using your vehicle on the town project.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if they're doing, you know, one of the public utilities or. I'd like to clarify that first before, you know, because Fred had mentioned maybe keeping that. Just designating that vehicle for those types of things, you know, as the lights, it has the.
Yep. That's a good idea, too.
And just for the fact we own it. Might not be good for. You know, high-speed chase or something, but might be, might be good for just parking it on the side of the road when. You know. You know, Fred's got a detail officer either for one of the utilities or. Highway tree warden, whatever, you know, on the roads that. When they're needed. But I'll check on that.
Yeah.
To see if he was serious about it.
Is Rutland? Well, I should say, is this service connected to the Rutland Police Department? Or are they their own entity?
No, the police chief is in charge of it.
Police chief is in charge of it. Is the Rutland Police Department unionized?
Patrol officers and sergeants.
So would the animal control officers also be in the union with them?
No.
Does union costs are more?
No.
So we're not going to get hit with something like that.
They're not in it.
But they could vote to be in it.
Anybody could vote to be in it, but.
Yeah.
Our people could vote to union tomorrow morning. I'm down to being real, you know, the highway wanted to go on, uh, the union, they could do it. I wouldn't suggest they do it, but.
When it came time to file a grievance, the union would ignore them.
Yeah.
There's only one of them.
Yeah.
You want us to spend what for your twenty dollars a month dues?
Exactly.
Well, I would say that I would like to see the missing pages. Just contract, please.
John, if you look at your email.
Yep.
That you forward, that's how it's printed. Like I said, it looks like it's double-sided and when he scanned it, just scanned it straightforward. So it took. The odd page, you know, the top pages. He did, it wasn't double-sided scanned. Or it wasn't all on single page, so it didn't scan all of it is what it appears to me.
I'll get ahold of.
If you can just do it single-sided and re-scan it.
But I also think we should do. Decision tonight. At the next meeting, we should have.
Okay.
Questions. They offered to come tonight and I said.
Yeah, and until we get.
This is new to all of us.
Right, until we get everything. In order. They sheltered their dogs because they have. A pound.
Mm-hmm.
Of their own. They can do four dogs. If somebody doesn't claim the dog, what do they do with them?
That's a good question. You have to ask Jen. They may have a backup with Worcester and more rescue league.
The animal rescue league of Worcester?
Yeah.
Is that a no kill, a no kill?
Yep. Got a cat from there once.
Hmm.
I got a cat from there once.
What happens in a situation where? That shouldn't be the option. The no kill.
Oh.
Some animals need to be put down.
Yeah.
Because they're that far gone.
Well, you can ask her when she comes here. She, she deals with this.
Yeah.
Every day.
I, I, I always have had the feeling that Worcester does put dogs down. For a second chance, I don't get that feeling from.
No.
And there's got to be other areas. Towns such as that that would not do a kill situation, unless it was an emergency, unless the animal is in extreme pain. Or anything like that, then I can understand it, but just because somebody doesn't pick them up or whatever, no.
Yeah, no, no.
No, that was kind of the point of the question.
I'll keep an open mind till I see the rest of the contract pages that are missing.
Yeah. I'll email them tomorrow.
And, and you know, I, I would just like to check to make sure about. Our ACO office too. And we can check Fred again on, on the.
Yeah. I'll search based on him to see what, whether he's serious about that or. But I, I would like to know the answer to the other. Is it? The officers are using their own vehicles.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Um. Are they under the false impression that they're? All state insurance or whoever is gonna pay and then they come in and say, hey, you were working for a municipality with your vehicle, da, 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 da. I don't, I don't know the answer to it.
There's so many accidents with people on detail.
Yes.
That we, we really should know. I did not realize our detail people were using their own cars. I thought they were actually using at least one of the cruisers. So I think we really need to check that out then. I, I would hate to see anything happen that way.
I know that Mike Sweet. Put the lights and everything in his personal vehicle. Gone to his insurance company and they said, yeah, upgrade you to a commercial policy.
Ah.
Because you're using it to respond.
Right, so then we beg the next question, how many of them have commercial insurance, which is more money out of there?
Yeah, right.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, I doubt any.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
But it's more, you know, we got that. That Explorer. And we're getting another one that might be.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Explorer and that option?
Thanks, Maribel. I don't know what we would do with that. Alright, I lost it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on the Regional Animal Control Office? Until next meeting?
Until next meeting.
Okay. Um, Ocam Center School Water Heater. We've been having that checked out. And it's still leaking.
Um.
So we're going to have to have it repaired. We've had people that have gone down and looked at it. And the results have come. Have been coming in.
So Maribel, yeah, Maribel and I met with George Murray Facilities on Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, up at the school and uh. Leaking a little bit worse than what it was. Maribel had gotten some quotes, but. They were kind of different. And so we asked George if he could go back and talk to Mr. Clark. And see what the specs are. For that system that's there now. And. This one, the one quote, the lowest one, was not at the same kilowatts as. The water heater that's there. It's quite a big difference. And so he called me this evening before the meeting. I think he called Maribel too, but um. Said, yeah, that, that one. Probably wouldn't maintain the temperature. So I think it would. Be who us to have Maribel get three more quotes. And then go with the um. The gallons. The kilowatts, the. Uh. And just put them back out to the same people that she's already called and let them update them.
Yeah.
Um, you know, with that information on the. Administrator, the district office, facilities. And um, George's biggest worry is if that thing lets go. We just replace that cafeteria floor. So that's really what his big concern is, is that we get it done. Um. Obviously. You know, before we. If it lets go, the water's going. Towards the cafeteria, so.
So I never uh, decided we're, we're funding that, did we?
No.
We had talked about using ARPA.
I think that's the best idea.
And where it's an emergency.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Not have time for a town meeting. It's probably a good. Good way to pay for it.
Which brings us to our next category of ARPA funding. You're right on time.
So we'll put it back out.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we should probably meet. It's Monday unless everybody's going on vacation. Uh, to. You know, take, you know, whoever bids on it, if they update their bids, whatever. Um, so that we can let them know that. Yeah.
If we think.
We've settled on this one and. Go forward with it, so. But I think you'd like to get it done before school opens.
I don't know how realistic that's gonna be because.
I don't either.
The um, water heaters are at least five weeks out.
Five weeks.
It's on one of them, when I talk to them, yeah, and he knows that too.
But that may have changed.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, availability could have been at that time period, so we'll have to find out going forward with the.
Is that the largest one, the smallest one, or either one?
That was the one that matches the one that's there.
Okay.
Was, they were saying a five-week um, lead time.
Lead time.
And the largest one said that as well, to me in person.
The same.
They did, okay.
Same for either one then, so we're looking at five weeks. Once we make a decision. Okay.
If I can get all the quotes in. Hopefully they can resubmit them. By next week. I mean, they should be able to, I would think, though.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I would hope so.
I mean, they.
Yeah.
They're looking at, they've all gone.
They all have done site visits, right?
Yeah, really. It was more just, we didn't have the.
Specifications.
Specs, yeah, just a short list of. Yeah, and it's really was a very. Maybe five items, you know, the, the wattage, the. Gallons. Gallons per minute, you know, flow rate.
Yeah.
Temperature, um. Recovery time, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Because I would think they have to maintain.
A certain amount.
Temp for doing dishes.
Level, yes.
You know, for.
Absolutely.
To sanitize it, so.
Very good. ARPA funding.
So water heater.
The water heater?
Yep.
Do we have anything left on ARPA that hasn't used any of their money yet?
Hmm, I didn't print out one. Um, we have Board of Health still has a remaining of two thousand nine hundred and nine hundred dollars and fifty cents. Um, under. Uh, let's see.
We're still waiting on Charter Spectrum to compare to us with their.
M I M A meet-in that was twenty-three hundred dollars had been initially appropriated. Just for different meetings the board members would attend.
Right.
There's a balance remaining of one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. So I don't know if you guys want to hold on to that or. Send it back. Um, I think that's the only one. The last update on this was still in May and at that time we had a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Left um, at the last, in this last warrant, one or two items have come off, so I will. Update it with the accountant and then within, by the end of the week, have a new sheet up on. The website.
What two items came off?
I, at least I know one for sure. I think maybe two, but one for sure, the eight seventy-five for the H R um, seminar. That was voted a while back. That just came up in this warrant as I got the bill. So I know that's coming off.
Okay.
I think there might be another one, but I'm not for sure, but definitely the eight seventy-five.
Did the um. Money for the tree service over at Pine Grove come off?
Um, well, that's already allocated with the total, so yes, that's being incorporated in that remaining balance, yeah.
And the arch?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's all deducted, that's all allocated for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there aren't. Oh, the trees are all right. The arch, does it have the contract it needs? I know they have to be contracted with by December.
Thirty-first, yeah, so. Um, we had the three quotes and I believe that's the extent, so they might want to put something in write-in. To be able to secure.
Okay.
That with the contract and just keep in mind that any money, the money has to be. You know, assigned in a contract to whoever, and if you don't use it all or any of it, it can't be. Passed on to something else after it's.
Right.
Allocated with the contract. So if you don't use it.
Okay.
It goes back at that point.
Don't we need uh?
To get rid of, we may. We may, don't know.
Yeah.
This though. Somebody actually has a telephone ring. Okay. And the hundred twelve thousand. And we would be taking the heater from there.
Mm-hmm. And the tree disposal, hopefully.
Yeah, I cut that down.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Not too bad. Anything else on ARPA?
Think of anything.
Anything you can think of?
Not off my head, right?
Okay. Um, FYI.
I know. Harold was going to put together a uh. And he's busy. Um, he had mentioned wanting to get rid of. A lot of the tires that have accumulated. And um. He was gonna see about, oh man, there are. Who would come and get them and the cost of disposal. But since he's. Been working on the material beds and Hunt Road and Crocker Night Road, uh, I think it's on the back burner.
Week. Has superintendent, he's the busiest person I know right now. And he's got a lot on his plate, but he did a great job.
The other thing he did.
Over at the site, does it, on Crocker Night?
The condition of the salt shed.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm.
So. I don't know where that would fall. I would seriously doubt there's. You know, if it's. What you would have to do or. Um. You know, repair, replace the whole thing. Whatever it may be, um, I don't, I don't think it's. Gotten to the point where. There's any kind of decision there. Said it was more on the, I guess would be the north side in the back. Was pushing out, so. Whether that's repairable. He said all the uprights are in concrete. They all seem pretty good, so.
Upper.
It could just be superficial, but. So, yeah, I think we need to wait till. He gets a little more information on it.
Okay, that's good.
When it gets. When it gets a chance.
When he gets the chance, I know. FY twenty-five budget letter?
I think the board should send a letter out to all the department heads, just reminding them that we made some cuts in this FY twenty-five budget. Need to really track their spending. Kind of a reminder.
Yeah, finance ended up just under two hundred in their reserve account.
Yeah.
And there's short ten thousand
Right.
going forward compared to. So that's not at this rate from FY twenty-four, that's not going to be there going forward to do the same things.
But this letter is to all boards, departments and committees, anyone who has a budget?
Who has a budget. Really pay attention and buckle down.
Fortunately, we're going to have a couple of projects that are going to require more money. Unfortunately.
True.
And we're going to have to figure out how we're going to handle those. I can think of two of them offhand. That is very expensive. And I don't see what we're going to do. We'll figure it out. Anything else on F twenty-five budget letter? I agree with that, that they have to be very careful.
Yeah.
Well, we could ask for their uh, annual reports early. Yeah, their inventories. Put it all in the same letter.
Inventory.
Inventory, yeah, I forgot about that yet.
Inventories.
When do you want the inventory? Let's do by
September first? October first?
Get everybody a chance to think about it.
Same with
Tim will probably give you his tomorrow.
And I, same with the reports?
The annual town reports.
October first as well?
Absolutely.
Yep.
That way we won't have to
That way there's no scrambling at the end and
Yeah.
We can send them out early and get them back early and
Just remind them on the annual town report that's from July first twenty-three to June twenty-four.
Yeah.
I don't know. It, it gets very tricky at the end of the year for doing that. Maybe from July. But you know, reminders, probably say we'll send out the reminder again in August.
Yep.
Again in September.
Well, that way those are cool.
But that way we'll be able to get our town reports out early.
Oh, the other thing on the budget thing, I don't know if it falls under this, but uh no, we'll do it on the, the next line item.
Oh, okay, um just a question because it was suggested that our special town meeting, instead of being held too early, hold it again like towards January, so they can see their half-year
Yep.
budget as to only a couple of months, which would be if we did it in the fall.
Perfect, perfect.
Do you agree with that then? Okay, because that will help keep them on track.
Yeah. That'll give the assessors enough time to
Yeah, totally.
balance
Yes.
for the February first bills.
Yep.
And then if they see that they are spending a little too much, it gives them a few more months to cut back. Pull back on that.
That's, that's a good idea.
Thank you. So instead of rushing it through the Thanksgiving and Christmas season, we'll get the New Year's.
Did they finalize the budget the other day and the governor sign it yet, or?
She was about to sign it the last I heard, but they got it through Congress.
Yeah.
And she was, she was in line to sign it. They said sometime, I thought maybe over the weekend or today.
The one email, but I didn't see that she actually
No, I, I think
There were some last minute things they were talking about.
Yeah, there was some things.
But I didn't see that she signed the budget.
Balancing out.
Uh, okay.
This committee is done with their budget, so now it goes to her.
Yeah.
So she may have it already.
Yeah, it sounded like they were going to have the votes.
Yeah.
Um, or the roll call votes. Yeah, so it was Friday or Thursday or might even been Saturday. I have to go back and read it.
I had a feeling it might be over the weekend.
Usually is.
They may have had, yeah. True. Okay, all set on that. And then we have the audit report, audit management report that we received. We had our third audit done.
And we touched on that a little bit last week. Correct?
Yeah. Love and issues. I mean, our repeat. So we didn't get
We didn't get to do. I think that was one thing they were saying, that there were several things that weren't done, that they had asked to have a year ago done.
But we also lost treasurer in the meantime and
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Lot in the meantime.
So.
Town clerk.
A lot of these things deal with the treasurer's office, so.
But I, I, I did notice, number one, we recommend the town review its critical controls over its security and cyber operations, and I said, ah, there we go. Continued training of employees and implementation of cybersecurity controls, ongoing. Then it said annual process. We'll have to think of I'm sure they're going to have some more classes.
Oh, MMA ones, yeah.
Yes, that we, we can all tie into
Yeah.
and get credit for it at the same time.
Yep.
This was another one that took my attention, was the evaluating cash processes of cash handling areas annually through effective risk assessment and proper safeguards as an effective control. From having fraud. Because we just changed from cashless to a green to crack cash now too.
Yeah.
Are there any thoughts about um the trust funds and maybe taking a look at how those are invested? Whether they're too conservative, not conservative enough? Um in relation to the yields?
Number four addresses that.
Right.
Yes, yeah, that was another one we really should look at because according to them, we're probably not getting enough percentage.
No.
So we should think about changing.
I thought we, I thought that was
I know Erin had talked to
Yeah, with
The treasurer about it, I don't know if it's been implemented yet.
I thought it.
Now, I think you had mentioned to me, well, probably a year and a half, two years ago now, but um, we do have it with an investment firm.
But I, but I think that they were looking into somewhere else or just a better interest rate for our best, for the town's benefit.
Yep.
I think, because they were all put into the same
I think that got changed.
I think that got changed.
I do, I do think so.
But Alum you associates
Yeah.
in Worcester is the investment program.
What was the one before then?
I don't remember.
That's, if, that's been the one since
It's been a while.
I started here.
Yeah.
But I think that recently the treasurer inquired, I, I want to say maybe even it happened, I'm, I can't speak on her behalf, but
Eric.
I'll see if she's there.
I mean, is that something, be better in fidelity account? I'm just using that as an example, necessarily, but where there's
I think there's D O R controls on where we can put it.
Right.
It could very well be. They're, they're suggesting certificates of deposit and treasury bills because they exceed five percent
Right.
in our legal investments for us.
Yeah, and that's the rate right about now, it's four and a half, but five.
My savings account, I got
Tenth of a penny.
I didn't quite get four, four cents.
You're doing good compared to
I thought, oh my word.
I don't want to rag on the local bank that used to pay four percent.
Yeah.
So it did get done, the trust account, she's tied up with something right now, but she, it did get done. Um, and it's now getting about five and a half percent, she said.
Oh, good.
Versus like half a percent that it was
Yeah.
So that'll break down between each individual trust within, yeah. Because it did show a big loss in the Alden, the year, two years ago.
It did, it really did.
It was really no
Did she put the stabilization money in there?
No, I don't know, I'll, you know, I'll have her come in. Not sure.
I mean, she wouldn't put those in, well.
Well, they don't recommend you put the whole thing in.
No, no, I mean, between the trust and stabilize, that should be a separate account.
Yes, yeah. Howdy.
How are you?
Right. Just going over the auditor's report stuff. And we're wondering may it change on the investment end of things, the trust fund investments?
Uh, not the trust funds, on the regular general fund money.
Okay.
I put money into the M M D T and it's earning five and a half percent before it was earning I think it was less than a half percent.
Okay.
So like I just posted June and it was four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for that one month.
The one month.
For that one account.
Would the um, the other accounts, would they be able to go into that also?
Um.
Are we allowed to?
No, so the trust fund are in different investment um vehicle as opposed to, they're in long-term vehicles
Yeah.
as opposed to short-term. The M M D T is in short-term.
Do we get quarterly statements for those?
For the trust funds, yes.
The individual trust funds.
Is that the one with Paul Alum you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all in the same account, but they're just listed individually, yeah.
Cemetery, yes, it's in that too.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I were just the would it possible to get a quarterly report of the board copy?
Just the most updated one?
Whichever's the latest one, it doesn't have to be yesterday.
Susan Turnbull, you branch your leg, where's the stabilization? That's in brought home you too.
Used to get it.
But that's an account you can go in and out of.
Uh, what do you mean by going in?
Withdrawal money.
You can't, but you really have to let them know in advance because they put it in long-term investments.
No, no, I'm, yeah, but it would be a town meeting vote.
Right.
Your time or special town meeting time to move any of that money.
Yes.
So what, what do they need for lead time if it was a special town meeting and they had to pull funds from that or town, annual town meeting?
Well, they do know because they work with so many um, cities and towns, so they do know that most cities and towns need money about town meeting time.
Yeah.
So they usually give you like a warning to let, let them know maybe thirty days in advance.
Okay, so not six minutes in the
Yeah, no, not six months.
Are all of the stabilization funds invested or part of it?
All of the stabilization.
All of it, okay.
And those are in treasuries?
Uh, they're in different they're from the legal list, so there's a whole there's a whole list that they can, they do all the investing, I don't, I don't do the picking.
Good. Do they charge, and what's their fee percentage?
Um
To manage it?
You don't really see it because it, it, the way that they do it within the, the interest, so you don't actually book the fees.
So you don't know what they're charging?
You can if you know how to read those statements.
Okay. The other thing on there was the driveway permits law, Lucy has started digging into that.
I've been looking at the driveway permits.
I think what, what is the tailings process on the state law two hundred nine eight?
So tailings are all the old checks that have been hanging out there for a few years. So you actually have to post it on the website, you used to have to post it in the newspaper, but I think just the website now. And give people the opportunity to come back and ask for that money back, and it just sits in like a tailings account. We post it to tailing, so if anybody comes back later on and says, you know, I found this check from two years ago.
Yeah.
So it just takes a little while because you have to post everything.
I didn't even know you could get it back after a few years, if you ever suddenly finds one.
Yeah.
A lot of that fell into the ambulance, correct?
Yes.
That we
It, it very well may have.
It's uncollectible.
Yep.
Yeah.
You've read this, right, to you, thank? Naturally, we got the thirty-four thousand and driveway things, we'll be searching now, but what is this eight thousand in tailings for six years that remains active?
So after it sits in tailings for a while, um, you can bring it in as revenue? So what he's suggesting, I don't know how old those are, it sounds like they're really, really old.
Yeah, he said in over six years ago, so it'll be safe to move that. It's eight thousand bucks.
Yep.
Let me check my old checks at home.
Uh, the accountant has to do an extra move it.
Okay.
Does the board want to make a vote and move that? I think last time that's what she, they had asked, or just uh, make an official vote.
Make a motion that we move the eight thousand dollars in trailings into the general, general fund?
To revenue, yeah.
Into revenue, okay, the second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now Lucy, you said you did notice in the driveway permits that permits these two years.
I've gone through all the permits from two thousand to twenty twenty-four. There were a hundred fifty-seven permits issued at that time, and there are several that never were refunded, and I think it's because some of the work was never done. And it was mounted, right now I'm up to eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And that's just from those years. I've got to go back now to nineteen eighty-one. And the, most of the ones that I've seen, just looking through eighty-one to eighty-five, most of those were all refunded. I think when the program first I think when the program first started, you know, people were paying back, paying back immediately as soon as they did their aprons on their driveways. But recently they've been not rushing to, to pay them, but I've only seen four that are still open. Only four.
And those are current.
And, and. They still will expire in twenty-five.
No.
So, but, but I'm sure there'll be other people applying for the permits as they're building houses and like that, but I just took a ride down my road in Barry Road. And I saw it just quickly, at least seven driveways that never put the, the aprons into their. Driveways. Now does that leave it up to the town to now having to put those aprons on all those side? Cause it's going to cost us more than the four hundred dollars.
Well, it would depend if the houses were built before nineteen eighty, there was no rule. So some of those houses may have been built before that time. So it doesn't, it doesn't affect them either.
I didn't, you know, some of them are fairly newer houses that haven't put the money yet. Some of them I can tell you were built in the late seventies.
Right.
Especially if you do Adams Road.
Yeah.
They were being built around the time my house was being built, so I know that they didn't have to put them in. So I would have to now look up the numbers, see, you know, for each of the permits, see to whom they belong. And then I can figure out a little more, but it just takes a little more research into the paperwork. Kevin really did a good job with this paperwork. I just have to match up the numbers with the people and their addresses.
Yeah.
To find out who's done what, and that'll take me probably one trip through town to check all the addresses and see who has the apron on and who doesn't. And what year the house was built. It may take me a little while longer, but it, it will be done. But I can't guarantee that. That money. Is going to stay and go into general fund. Because we may have to put the aprons on some of those driveways ourselves. And that's going to eat up a lot of the money. It's not going to be cheap. But in the nineteen eighties, the permit was a hundred fifty dollars. They're now four hundred dollars. That went up into the mid eighties or so. But it's going to cost more than four hundred dollars probably to put the aprons on for people. So it's going to take me a little while longer to get through it all.
Yeah, so going forward, the, the logistics of it would be if you're doing the road. That particular road, that's the time to do Aprils.
Do them too.
Not separately. You know, individually running all over town. Cause that would be quite expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, it will be.
Modify the policy and put a deadline. Two years, three years, whatever.
I think.
It's two years.
It's two years on.
The current one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Now whether that was voted at a selectmen's meeting at some point.
Two years on a verbal.
No, it's also in the printed paper.
It is on.
And it was changed in, I saw it changed in nineteen eighty-two from one to two. Now, I don't know if it was voted at a meeting that it was going to be a two-year limit, but that's when I first started seeing the handwritten two over the one.
So that two.
Originally it was one year.
Application?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, that's what Harold said, it was on the application.
I don't know.
Yeah, I felt like it wasn't, but I could be totally wrong.
It's printed on there now without a, without it being handwritten. He, he made up new copies.
What we should do is get one of those forms at the next meeting, review it, make sure it's on there and take a vote.
I can do that. I have them.
I mean, they, they.
I have all the forms at home. I have everybody's, so if you don't know, I can look it up and I can tell you whether you got it or you don't.
They may have voted at a meeting in the eighties.
They may very well have.
To set the rate, to set the time limit to, cause the bylaw just reads you will get it.
Yeah.
Right.
And then so it seems to be that they, they left it to the discretion of the board of selectmen and highway superintendent.
Yeah.
Cause the original was one dollar.
For permit? Hundred dollars.
No, one year.
One year.
It was. And like I said, in nineteen eighty-two, I see that it was changed to two.
So that hasn't changed.
And a hundred fifty to four hundred dollars. Yeah.
Two years is certainly enough time to, if you're building a house.
Yeah.
It should.
Yeah.
They never asked me to put one on ours, so we never did till I paid the driveway, then it's all there.
Do you have any concerns, Wendy, with this audit?
No, I think it was a bad audit at home.
Okay.
No, it seemed pretty good.
Old item.
Yes.
Clear up which.
We can do. I know it's the recommend the highway superintendent and town accountant work on this, but. Since she's not housed here, it would be very difficult for her with all the papers that's involved.
Yeah.
It'd be easier just for me to do it.
Any questions on this?
We wanna, does the board want to put it on the website?
Yes.
The report?
Report, yeah.
That's, it, it was, the other ones are listed.
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna make a vote, just put it up on there?
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh. Put the, uh, report on examination of the basic financial statement and additional information from the audit. For a year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, for the town vote. I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything back, Maribel, from the U R?
For the. Um.
Financial.
Mm-mm.
Thank. Let's take a little longer.
Yeah. Yeah, no, still nothing from when they came out and did all that. I mean, I can certainly reach out to Jared and or Jess. Right, is that?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Just the touch base?
Yeah.
But yeah, I have not.
Let's see if there's anything else they need.
Okay.
Just curious.
Were we all set on the management report?
I am. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, any new business? Any old business?
Kind of covered whatever old business there was.
Yeah, I think we got through pretty much everything.
Yeah, I heard from Charter, Spectrum.
Not the only, the last thing that they stated after I asked them about coming out for a meeting was if. If they, if we think or the board thinks that the homeowners of those two properties in question. Would be willing to work with them and let them cut through their. Property or, or whatever the case is, but did not, um. Acknowledge or at least reply to the part where I asked for them to attend.
Good.
A meeting.
Have we reached out to the two owners?
Yeah, well, Bernice was here that night and she had correspondence with the. The other homeowner.
But did they authorize Spectrum to cut through that property?
That I don't know, but I don't think they would need to, because that's a right of way.
I can certainly reach out. I don't know.
Utility right of way up there. So the utilities can go on there anytime they want.
So what is Spectrum talking about?
Um, back to that one.
Well. That's what I was thinking.
I'm like.
Pretty obvious.
Um.
Okay, so there's no real update from last week's meeting?
Yeah, I just pretty much told her that, um. That was following up on how things were moving along with the original agreement that the board would like to meet. Uh, this would give the opportunity for either side to ask questions and to be on the same page moving forward with the original. Agreement completion. I told her when the board meets, then the, you guys are scheduled for the next, you know, for Sept- uh, August and September. And she did not acknowledge that portion. She just stated that. That she, she first asked why the board would want to continue with those two addresses. If we had a reason. Not really, that was part of the original agreement, but, um.
Really?
That she has to collect internal information and collect back, um. And then just ask if the property owners would be willing to work with them. On cutting through their property. I did not give, um. Given the difficulty in crossing wetlands to serve these addresses, it would be helpful to hear that the property owner is interested in service and would like to explore. With them the opportunity to possibly come through their property at a different angle, so we don't have to cross wetlands. Do you think that the property owner would be willing to discuss this option with Charter?
How about that nice road?
If so, please get a map. If so, please get it. Is it possible to get a map of their property slash property line so we can overlay it with our network to understand our options and alternatives?
National Grid doesn't have any problem getting power up there. Without going through wetlands.
Yeah.
Why is Charter going through wetlands? That makes no sense to me. And you said the poles are up there?
Yeah, um, National Grid's just. Forester is waiting on their overhead. Which is lines and poles to. It must be their budgeting or something, but going forward.
Yeah.
But it's not a dead. Program.
Right.
As far as maintaining power to the top of the hill up there, to those two houses, they know they have to supply power up there.
Yeah.
So it's. So to, to run another route, seems like it would be a lot more expensive than to. Through the woods.
Yeah.
And it's three times the distance going up Stone Road. Imagine if we let them do it, Josephine probably. Hack us from the grave. This, that's what she wanted years ago and they told her no. Oh, they said it was shorter across the pastures, but pastures grew up, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that is an option. It's go up the road, but it will certainly cost more money before straight than it. That road's horrible as far as big trees.
So what would you like? Me to, I mean, I guess.
You could send him an email and say, hey, when are you going to finish this?
I mean, I feel like I.
Ninety-six thousand ARPA money that. If that's, we want to know if we're going to spend it on something else. Well, I mean, that's, that's really the gist of it.
And then she's asking for math, but I mean. Isn't that, even if that's an option that they want to explore with the homeowners? Is that for the board to have to?
It's not even an option really for the homeowners, I don't think, because we had a committee in town that worked how many years to put this forward. The selectman voted to use the ARPA money to, to fund this project, what, a hundred ninety-six thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Or ninety-eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So we paid fifty percent, correct?
Mm-hmm.
The other fifty is owed at the completion of the contract. So whether the homeowner at the top of the hill or either homeowner actually wants to buy. Um, Spectrum Charter's communication product at the end of the day is immaterial.
Right.
The contract is you will supply it. If they want it, then they'll contact you to hook it up.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I, you know.
I agree.
There's no, there's no guarantee that just because you run the wire by the house, somebody's, oh, yeah, well, I want to pay three hundred bucks a month for that.
Yeah.
Or, you know, whatever, depending on the amount of service that you would purchase.
Sure. The assessors have the maps.
Right, but is that for me to get maps to send to them?
No, they already have.
They have to have, their engineers are out mapping all this stuff out.
Right.
I saw them.
They would have done it before they even started.
Right.
So that if, if so, is it possible to get, yeah, a map of their property and property line? So we can overlay it with our network to understand our options and alternatives, but. I don't get it. That was, that was part of the original agreement, so it's not like it's an addition where now they need to see it.
I've looked at the assessor's map that right of way is clearly on. You know, between stones and fuses. Yeah. Plain as day on the, on the town maps. So I E. It's public information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correspondence, Lucy.
Correspondence, um. We did receive an email from our accounting firm and they would like to have a meeting with the board of selectmen to look at some figures from the end of the year. We'll need to set up sometime that we can meet with them.
Other than a regular meeting, do they need it right of way?
I don't know how fast they need it. They just want to know probably what would be a good time for us to meet with them.
This goes financials.
Mm-hmm.
They suggest business hours or after hours or?
They didn't, they didn't specify. They just requested a meeting.
I would say any meeting with the accountant would probably be business hours.
I would think.
Primarily they don't work in the evenings. That would be my guess.
Mine too.
Yeah, so it'd probably be August sometime, right? Just for coordination.
Yeah, if need to.
Unless they suggest something earlier, well, you'll find out.
Yeah, so I can.
See when they're available and, yeah.
Sure, and then as long as we post it with them, if it's the board meeting.
Right.
You know, the combine.
Post it within forty-eight hours, sure.
Okay, so I can touch base on their availability and reach out to you guys individually, make sure everyone's available on one specific day.
They wanted a business hour meeting or something.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, I, I, I would think that it would be business hours because they don't work evening.
That's true, they don't.
Only, you know, only for the.
Right.
Annual or special town meetings when come out.
Good.
Okay. We'll come up with a time that's amenable to everybody.
No.
Interesting. Any other business come before the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The board is adjourned at.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty?
The one on the spring.
Oh, fifty-one.